All right, I've got six o'clock.
I would like to... I just like...
Sure, Brent.
You're probably going to be down there, you do, and we gotta do the city's business. So, if you're down in our discussions and collaborations tonight, you know, I spoke for your presence of all those here. You're gonna have a great evening.
The citizens of the flag, the movement of our strength in America, in their republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, welcome to the night, we're taking a show up for a regular council meeting, um, factor. Do I have a little call please?
Mr. Jim Hundy.
Here.
Mr. Quinn Edmanson.
Yeah.
Mr. Clay Cupper.
Here.
Mr. Lon Maddox.
Here.
And I will note that Sarah comments in this proceeding of action.
All right, they constitute the form, so, um, in front of you, you have an agenda. Is there any items that need to be added to the agenda? I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept. All right. Uh, motion by Clay to accept, uh, second. Second by Jim, all in favor? Uh, all right, motion there. Um, you have a copy of the minutes before you, I'll put them up on the screen. You can do your job, how? You can have your good stuff. If you put wrong with the, put wrong on screen, uh, if you think anything is clear, just say it. Any other motion? All right, any other motion, we have a second. Second by Ron, all in favor? All right, question there. All right. Chief Smith?
Captain Hearn gave a report last meeting, uh, I think we got news going on, uh, us in the water department, gonna start doing hazard checks, uh, to tell the water trouble's getting up where we can actually get some good throws off these tires now, so we'll be doing that. So, somebody calls you in the neighborhood something, see water flow or something, I can't run down street, we'll be out doing spot hazard checks, starting tomorrow.
Any questions, Chief Smith? If not, Chief Kells.
There's the, uh, all the statistics, it's real late, but we got it.
One thing Chief Kells and I talked about the other day was if we couldn't try to capture the information, this is kind of, this is a little bit misleading, because the federal cause for service of 215, that's why we're here, or why we have units on duty. Uh, what, the segment that we're missing is that sheriff units, state police, community council, and then the city answer calls. Um, either why we have somebody or we don't have somebody at all.
Like for the month of August, a lot of KSP did seventy-three, and the sheriff department did ninety-five. So, you'd have to add those numbers to that to get your real picture.
That's one thing we're gonna start trying to work on, and we'll set some steps in place, trying to have those numbers, we'll probably change the way this goes, I don't know if we'll be able to do that, but, um, I think that's an important thing that we're missing is, that's not a true indication of the activity in the city, it's just the indication of what we're able to take care of.
It's roughly, uh, it's roughly fifty-six hours that we don't have anybody here, normally.
Well, we've, uh, we've also been working, last week, um, Chief Kells and I, we were, uh, trying to, um, trying to see what we could do on bringing some labels in, going back through the applications that we had, see if any of those people were still available. So, it's ongoing, we're trying, it's just, it's extremely difficult to do in this market, so. Any questions? All right, thank you, Chief. All right, water department, do you have anything to, anything to report?
Other than the unfortunate, fire department had, uh, eighty-three towers inspected, should be getting results back on it in a couple of weeks or so, to know if anything's wrong with it or not.
Okay. Uh, the six-inch valve that earlier...
It's replaced, wing's been replaced, it's last Thursday, and they should be testing the other side of it tomorrow, I believe, whereas if they have someone else knew that tested, make sure that it's, uh, fine and open.
You might have any questions? One? All right, two, Frank.
All right, we're just doing our daily maintenance, everything's run as scheduled. Uh, we're gonna do some preventive maintenance this week for QD, get that out of the way, uh, for the quarter, and, uh, that's about it.
Um, we will, um, we'll try to have any information that, uh, Sarah wanted, that Chris wanted for, uh, for the city department, some of us, we'll try to have that through the thing. Um, Fred, what?
Other than, uh, issues like the sidewalks that we talked about the other day.
Okay. I'm gonna touch on some of that when we can, when we have the board, so. Um, Brent, do you have anything? Or Dave?
No. All right, well, moving right along, um, in parks, um, Halloween in the park is, uh, we've started to work on that, uh, we sent the, I went to the chamber breakfast this morning, with this letter, uh, give out to the businesses. Um, basically, this is a court letter for, uh, this, this will actually be the thirty-first annual family-friendly Halloween in the park, co-sponsored by City of Grand County News, and this image, I don't have the logo in it, but actually, Country Pumpkins is, uh, is a sponsor of this event, well, a couple of other things that they're helping us with this year, um, we're gonna get, uh, two hundred of the little pumpkins, not the big pumpkins, the little pumpkins for kids, um, and that'll be the pumpkin decorating portion at three-thirty. Um, it'd be kinda like an arts and crafts, we're working with, uh, materialers from the high school, uh, help crafts part of it. It's mainly just to give back things, really, it's free, it's a free event to all kids in the community, it's just a family-friendly, fun alternative for trick-or-treats. Uh, we did it last year, uh, we have about eleven other kids, uh, show up for the event, so, we're anticipating a girl a little bit this year, so I told the businesses this morning, chamber breakfast, it's, uh, they probably expect twelve hundred kids, eleven, twelve hundred kids this year. Um, but that's really the only thing we have planned that's, uh, in October. There are some other things that we're working on to go and fill inside with Halloween in the park, but we'll, once we get those down, down, we'll be able to do any of those. Brent?
Yeah. Um, I got the list of non-compliant businesses on there for everybody, um, but put a note down the bottom, just 'cause they're on the list doesn't mean they haven't done any contact with us. They only come off the list once everything we receive from them is correct. Um, the list is nine pages, and I think there's around seven hundred and forty on that. Now, what I do wanna note is when we did mailouts for renewals, we only mailed about six hundred. So, we've increased our list, I'm still trying to figure out the amount. I'm having to build a report to see how many we have issued. We then increasing businesses except they're non-compliant.
Non-compliant could mean...
They may not turn into paperwork, they handle up the social, up the application, or receive late, early, and check for their late, late penalty interest. I don't take it out of the system, they don't go off the non-compliant list until everything we get from them is ready to be accepted as issued allows.
Now, some of these, correct me if I'm wrong, can't they just notify the city that they're no longer doing the...
Yes, and that's what some of those are on that, yes. Some of them, they just haven't called and said, hey, we're no longer doing it, you know, some of the carpenters or contractors and things like that.
What along with it, do they have any questions, Brent?
Um, you all have a copy of this in front of you, this is the scorecard, actually, tell them, email. Um, what I, I kinda, I'm not gonna dwell on this too long, I just kinda wanna point out a couple of things. The first thing that you see is that our general liability ranking was the thirty-five point two down. Um, that doesn't, that doesn't mean we failed by any stretch of the imagination, um, it just means we have to have a ranking of at least forty in order to get a discount on our general liability insurance coverage for the city. Um, there are three pages here of criteria that goes into the risk management, law and control evaluation thing, um, and since we've gone through this, which we have to go through this every, um, and we got this recording last week at staff meeting, all the department heads, and we all sat down, we discussed this line by line by line, looking at all the things that we can do to try and raise this score, um, if, if we can make some simple changes and get this score raised, then that transitions into an immediate saving on our insurance costs, and put it upward at ten thousand a year, um, just by making some changes. So, we've identified several changes in this, uh, any recommendations, now that we kinda have an idea of what exact things that we're looking for, um, we know how to kinda carry them. As ago, some of these things like our personnel policy, we spent, council spent a great deal of time the last couple of years, uh, making modifications to the personnel policies, so we spent a lot of administrative time doing that, and if you see we, um, we racked up, we've got full credit on all of those. Um, some of the areas where we didn't do so well was on some of the, uh, some of the other areas, like the risk management law system. Um, in order to get the five points there, for example, we have to have dedicated individuals. Well, the fire department has a safety officer, uh, that kinda does the same thing for the fire department, so we're gonna expand their role a little bit, and let him kinda take over, uh, a safety assessment for, for the whole city. Uh, he is a part-time, uh, employee, so he does need qualifications for this, so now that we have that in place, then we actually qualify for that five points for next year. So, really, it's things that are cost minimal to us, uh, it's just at work that, uh, that person, you know, one of our, our folks will take on. Uh, the safety committee, we got no points out of that, um, so, uh, we do have a safety committee, establishing that safety committee, doing inspections, uh, periodically review, you know, once a quarter, go through our claims and review those to see what changes that we can make. Um, we don't have that many claims, we only have, the city this time, we have a very small amount of claims, um, however, it doesn't matter how many you have, you only have one, you know, it's, it's a claim that you can try and make an improvement on, so. Anyway, I will spend a whole lot of time a little line by line, but you can kinda look through there, um, and know that every single department, uh, has sat down and have come up with ideas to try and help reduce, um, or get more points on this, to help reduce the, uh, insurance general liability policy for next year, so, I think that'd be a good thing.
I have a question.
Yep.
What's the COA training? Is that for...
Um, the thing that we said, we send the council members through, the, um...
Which just can we send?
That would be just the council, there is some other training classes, the COA would be the council members, um, and that, we had this discussion, and a lot of things that we had discussions about in here with the insurance guy, um, his representative from KLC, and that was one of the ones we talked about, because it's, that really only applies to new members of the council, um, so, and it only, they only offer those courses after, um, after usually an election cycle, that's when new members of the council come on, so it's, the reason we got no points is because they looked to see if we had sent anybody after the last election. Uh, the only person that came on new to council was Clay, and he had already had that training, so we didn't have, there was no way we could've taken advantage of that, sending somebody to the new orientation council member. So, there are some things in there that we, we talked about, and some things we're never gonna get points for, um, but that's, since you brought that up, I know it doesn't make any sense, but, yeah. Did that answer your question?
I'm just trying to, um, if I ask somebody, like, any...
You don't get partial points, you get all the points you want.
Yeah, we tried to argue the case for some of the things, like, there's a section in here about defensive, uh, defensive driving training, we got zero out of five, however, that's a requirement of, uh, the fire department and, uh, and police department have, you know, drive, defensive driver train, trains.
Who would have, who would have had that?
It, it has to be anybody, they all...
I don't think...
So, the only, the only people that didn't really have it were the maintenance department and the folks, so, what we've decided to do, fire department does defensive driving every year, um, actually, it's next month is when they do their, their courses, so, one of the simple things that, that we're gonna do is, fire department's gonna modify their training, um, to allow the police department to, to go through it, the maintenance guys to bring their vehicles, it's, it's not only classroom, it's a hands-on, where they drive their cones and stuff like that, um, the KLC was extremely happy to back, so, we, that'd be another thing that doesn't really cost us anything, but we'll get, you know, we'll get that five points to that, in that category for next year. So, those are the things that we, we sat down and came out of that meeting that we identified that we can, yeah.
Try to do that every year, Brent? Every... Yeah. All right. Any other questions on that? Okay, moving into whole business item number one, water line upgrade to blackburn lane. The bid opening was Friday, we had the minutes for that, uh, wanted to look at those, uh, really those, the crux of that is gonna be right here in this chart, um, we had the meeting, we had two, uh, bidders that, uh, bid the project, uh, there was an alternate by Hale Disrupted, or Contracting, um, but we did have two successful bidders for it. Uh, Hale Contracting came in at eighty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety dollars, and Lawford Construction came in at one hundred thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, Logan, uh, did all the bids meet the specification?
Yes, and, uh, they both, I sent you the emails today, they, they both said they could start one for you.
I didn't include that on the slide, but, um, they didn't have to, they included the schedule on that, so.
Do you have any more exceptions?
Any what?
Any exceptions to the...
No exceptions, the only, the only thing unusual was Hale did bid an alternate, could use some standard thirty-six inch proppings to the, uh, for the six concrete, you know, it's...
So, with that, with that being said, that project that we looked at, um, the estimates that we had on the project were eighty-seven thousand, so, I think the estimate's pretty close to what the project actually made on it. All right, what are your feelings on this? Do you wanna move forward with this project now, with the process, really about as far as we can do, or just with seventy-five?
How many feet is this project?
Six hundred and thirty-five.
Six hundred and thirty-five?
Yes.
Did it go down just the highway, Chillicothe, or...
Um, uh, yes, it'll go that far, you know, start on McDonald's lot, when we're propping on it.
That where it started at?
That's where it started. Uh, we didn't go across, bid it to go across Wendy's because, uh, figured it takes it along the amusement park, and it needs to be put in immediately, which has to be done at a later time. If you have a problem with that section, if not, we're the one.
That's where the cross line comes in.
Is that water line down there or up? Is that that bad?
I wonder what, what told me that...
What's the matter with the water line we got there, man? I know we've had a break or two there, but McDonald's from out there, but we never had any leak trouble.
No, we hadn't, we ended up having three there, Clay, and that, that old cast iron line, that...
That old cast iron down, do that?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty rough shape. They laid that, they didn't bed it when they laid it, they laid it right on bedrock, and all that vibration just keeps rubbing holes in the bottom of it. But every, every time we dug it up, had a, had a break or a bad leak there, it's had a rock underneath there that's about the hole was.
I remember it been being broke for a few times.
One of the problems, Clay, is that in the McDonald's construction, they have to put in a six-inch line to feed their buildings, their sprinkler, and their regular water, and that's a six-inch line they're down, so, right where they need to tie in with their six-inch line or with their pack, is right between the two breaks, just kind of, what a year and a half?
About that, yeah.
So, that's what we're most concerned about, is if they're gonna do all this construction, they're gonna reclaim all that property out there, do all the concrete driveways and all of that, and then we're gonna have a break there, and then we're gonna have to tear up everything that was just rebuilt, and it's gonna cost us a lot more to reclaim all of that and fix it, so, overall, that was the whole reason we looked at, just to fix that section, and we know it's bad.
That line would drop eight inch?
Six.
Six inches.
All six. And it also replaces that one fire hydrant, it's a hydrant there at Wendy's that's out of service now, it's broken, so it has to be replaced, that's a thirty-three hundred dollar cost. Um, they goes ahead and takes care of fixing that hydrant, actually moving it down and all that.
Have we got the funds in the water department to fix it up?
We don't have it in the water department, uh, and then one of the things that, one of the things that we talked about is that we could, we could borrow money from the general fund, to the water, to the utility account, and then pay those funds back at the end of the year, um, when we, uh, once we reach the end, end of the budget cycle, with surplus that we have left over out of the water, or out of the utility fund. But we've been basically borrowing the money from ourselves instead of having to borrow it from a bank or anyone like that. It isn't anything that we planned for, and the budget, we didn't budget for, this kind of, this level of repair, we budgeted normal repairs, but not preemptive repair.
Major repair.
Yeah.
I was just concerned about it, how bad the shake pipe is.
Mr. Donald's willing to give, put to you this, you know, he... I'd say they'll, they'll probably get it through flowers, okay, 'cause I think they want to open, you know, the park.
Yeah. They'd like to come to it tomorrow.
So, they'll wanna do it probably within the next month, next, next month, but they don't wanna do it before you start paying.
Yeah, that was, one of the stakeholders we brought in when we, when we were looking at this, water city department, actually, I had their project in here, or project manager, uh, come, uh, sit down with us so that we knew that we could fit this project into their framework, be able to work for that framework. Um, they have to tear out a lot of that, they tore it out, lose everything along with front of that property, that's right where this water line is gonna go, so while it's already torn up, we can get the pipe in there, they're, they already had it planned to build all that back in, so we don't have to afford that cost, it's just, that would be part of this, right, probably, for them, so.
Yeah, if we don't do it, we're looking at three different, we already got three driveways instead of just the two that were there before, plus anything they do as far as, it is a green space.
Well, Hale's two bids, either one of them, okay, or...
It's, it's up to you, uh, in terms of major propp, I understand the mayor that you're doing four or five new meters to go into, or two-inch meters to go in meter pits. Uh, personally, I don't wanna put a three-inch meter in a meter pit, we always put in proppings, so, it's up to you if you wanna, and if you wanna save the eight thousand we've spent, you know, that's still left to the city.
I talked to the water department, they were asking the water specifically directly, but they would rather keep it in the pits, just because that's the standard that they've have been using.
Two inches, I think.
It does allow for more rent, when they do have to work on it, instead of working on it upside down, hanging down into the holes and stuff.
Six inches.
I'll let you ask, if you have any specific questions, 'cause I don't know the difference between thirty-six and all.
You need to find it.
But it's two inches, I think, two lines going before.
I think it's, 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 you know, we're firing, you know...
Well, maybe, it's on the back.
I think I provided, I mean, this one, there's always, it's not, like, if we haven't required it on paper, you know, I just, I'm thinking of, like, what's the case yet? And also, I mean...
What year was that water line in? Thirty-seven?
No, Clay, that, that was put in before they built McDonald's, that's when they put Blackburn Lane in there, but I, I don't know what year that was put in, that was a long time before me.
I know it's in there, I know it's in twenty-five, it's in there, it's in...
Yeah.
We're up here, we hit the water line, we're in, Capstone Water Line, we need one.
And you do think that it should be in the pit versus the...
Well, I've been requiring everybody to push new meters in, put them in concrete pits, because one man can climb down in that pit and he can work there, so.
Okay, then I, I, yeah, I think that, we're talking, he's been, up to this point, he's been requiring everybody to do the pit, the paper, I think we should stick to that. I mean, I know it's a thousand dollars, but...
What three companies you got bid on this?
Just two, Hale, Hale Contracting and Lawford Construction.
Just two?
Just two.
Both of them in the county?
No, Lawford, just have both count, and they were, and they were a hundred and thirty.
But we don't do a hundred and thirty. I don't know.
Hale's a, Hale is a local contractor there in town, there in East Town.
They look, they, they're a little bit, yeah.
That's Beanstead, Clay.
If we're gonna do it, huh?
Beanstead.
If we're gonna do it, I think those things, look, contract with that bet and keep it fit, and I think that's what we're gonna look out for, with that period of dry rig. So, I would move that we do it, if we're gonna do it.
Okay, I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by you, Paul.
Wait, I'm sorry, eighty-nine.
Yeah, the bid was the, yeah, the motion was to accept the low bid with Hale Contracting.
Yeah, for the...
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Did you, which Hale had two bids, uh, water department recommended staying with the concrete pit, is that what you were recommending?
I would go along with it, water department.
Yeah, we closed the bets, so, if you have a little...
Ron?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Sarah?
All right. I'd like those, occasionally, I guess, the...
I'll send out the, uh, I'll send you the notice, the board, the sign, and we'll sign it, and give out the...
Was there a notice received?
Yes, we did that. Yes, we'll do that, we'll do that when we sign the contract. He's gotta get his interest on performance payment.
Now, they can start this pretty soon, is that right?
As soon as we, as soon as we give him the notice of award, he'll get his bonds, his performance repayment bonds. And at that time, we'll get together with Jim and Dean and sign the contract and give him the notice for sure. He said it could start as soon as we got the package, so, that, that'll be hoped at.
Yeah, then it's more than anyway.
Well, he said we go in and go ahead and put the car across McDonald's party, and get that out of the way, and then the rest of it could be in later.
All right. Item number two. This was the public safety emergency access system, the lockbox system. We discussed this last year. Um, this will actually constitute a second reading of this ordinance, which is going up eight thirty-eight, two thousand seventeen. The ordinance of the city of Dry Ridge, Grand County, Kentucky, adopt the public safety emergency access system. And then it includes definitions as to what the access system is, uh, and what some of the language used in it. Like we talked about before, this is really something that is already being utilized on a voluntary basis, it's not requiring anything that businesses aren't already installing, the only thing we're doing is just kind of standardizing how it gets installed and where it gets installed. That's what section two talks about, uh, where it's required, section three talks about the quantity, section four talks about the placement and where it gets installed, and section five talks about what goes in it, and then six talks about the required maintenance to help that. And then section, section seven is optional access, uh, optional usage for it, and then eight is compliance and enforcement using section nine, section ten. Is there any question, I know we talked about this particular ordinance in detail, um, for several meetings. Is there, are there any questions about this, like, I'll put it on the. It, it won't have any effect on the insurance. That, this one is, the lockbox system is, it's a key system that places the fire crews to get, gain access to building without having to do damage to their building, which is the reason why I was partnering. If developers like to do that, they don't wanna spend thousands of dollars fixing it. All right, so then we're going to motion to accept ordinance eight thirty-eight, two thousand seventeen. Motion by Jim, is there a second? Second by Sarah, is there any further discussion? Right, can I have a roll call?
Ron?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sarah.
All right, motion carried, eight thirty-eight, two thousand seventeen. Item number three is the solid waste service rate, rate change. I went ahead and drafted it as first reading, um, after the discussion we had last time. You don't have to read that first reading, you choose another option. But this is a continuation of the public service trash collection increase and the others. You, you, after the last meeting, we wanted to do a little bit more research on this, so, you know. Some of the council has asked, asked us to provide some documentation, so if there is anything that we can do to this point, um, as far as the calculator, we built in some different rates that we can try to work with, so. How do you wanna, how do you wanna proceed?
They never did give one solid rate for a year or two years ago.
No. The, the way that works, if you look at the contract, they have, their contract's base rate is fixed. It's on the contract, it's fixed every two years, so much per person. What the variable is, is the fuel adjustment, and, and that one, it has a sliding scale depending on how much the fuel price is, based on the mid, mid-region, uh, bulk diesel fuel rate.
It's amazing they always use a high rate on this.
Well, that's the reason why they use the Department of Energy's weekly rate. They formulate that, that average rate every single week. Yeah, that's, that is actually what's written in the contract, that's the schedule that they use. It's, it's been a point of, of a lot of discussion as to exactly which day, uh, which day that they use that number, so we can kind of calculate it, you know, on the back end of it, but there's no way to forecast, uh, what the fuel price is gonna be next week, or what it was next year, so.
Did you come up saying things that you recommend for the low rate?
Well, we need, we definitely needed out of the rate calculator, we needed the dollar, um, the dollar and two cents just to break even. And that is with the fuel rates staying the same that it is now. If it fluctuates any higher than what it is right now, um, then that would be, we would not be compensating, we would be upside down again.
And that rate would have been two dollars, two dollars and fifty-seven cents from the last bill came out, so, if the price of diesel stays at two seven nine.
Well, we need at least a rate before we break even on it.
Yeah, a rate of a dollar two, um, is what it costs to take even, to be, to break even on that. Once you figure in what it really costs. And that would raise it to ten dollars and fifty-five cents.
But that gives us no leeway.
Does that give us anything, dollars and fifty-five?
That's trying to break even, right there. And that's not accounting for like hurricanes coming in and spiking the diesel fuel rates, you know, ten or fifteen cents, which could, you know, if you, if you look at that percentage, the difference between eight percent and ten and a half percent is almost a hundred dollars, right? So, a hundred dollars a month.
I think well at least forty, ten seventy-five. That gives a little bit of cushion, and it's, like you say, the adjustment, when the fuel goes up, it's still getting about even.
Yeah, I mean, our next rate adjustment has been two years, so we'll have to revisit this in two years, which helps another forty percent fuel increase.
Do you, do you feel like, what did you say, ten seventy-five?
We've got what I said, ten seventy-five.
Do you think that's enough?
We break even at the end of the half.
Well, yeah, as of last time. It, this is, this, you also hear, this, this is the rate.
And it's.
That was at two fifty-seven.
With this hurricane in Texas, you know, it's all rails shut down, it's gonna go higher, it's gonna, it's gonna burn on me.
So, I mean. So, it's ten seventy-five? I mean, it's currently at nine fifty, so that would, it's currently at nine dollars and fifty cents. So, that would be a dollar and quarter a month.
Oh. Well, I don't know, probably eleven hundred a month. But we.
We have to.
We're going ten fifty just to break even, right?
Ten fifty-five.
Ten fifty-five. I mean, nothing back enough to break even. I don't think that's gonna work.
I think ten seventy-five.
I think ten seventy-five is fair price. And that'll cover, like the mayor says, the next two years, and we're gonna be readjusting anyway. But that's just my opinion, I mean, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit.
The only other thing that, that I'm looking at is we're already back six hundred dollars, is that correct, Mayor? So, we're already six hundred dollars down to this. That's my biggest worry about it.
Well, there's no way that we could, even if we pass along a ten fifty-five increase right now, there's another billing cycle that will come through before we can even enact this and even start billing it, so we'll be down a thousand dollars with the, what it said, so. If we, if we did it at ten fifty-five, we, we definitely know we're gonna lose a thousand dollars. If we do it a little bit higher, we'll at least get that thousand dollars back that we lost.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah.
I like ten seventy-five, I don't think that your gas, I, of course, I'm not, gas is dropping now, gas is cheaper. So, hopefully, we can see, we can see, I don't think the bird's changing. Definitely the difference is.
Will the motion be in order for Jim to send you a time?
All right, motion ready, is there a second? Or?
I, I'm thinking somehow, a ten seventy-five should, should be good enough. I mean, I don't think that we should see a, even if you fluctuate some in the fuel, I don't think that we should fluctuate that much to get us there. Um, I think we would have some major, um, long haul issues going on if it got up that high. That, that would have to be something maybe might be revisited, if something really bad happened, and the fuel stayed up at that. You might have one month, but it does spike, but I don't think that it's gonna have a consistent high there.
All right, any other discussion over there? Um, this is the first reading, I, like I said, I did go ahead and put the ordinance. It's, it's assignment ordinance number eight thirty-nine, two thousand seventeen. Um, I'm just gonna summarize this, but it's an ordinance to the city of Dry Ridge, revealing ordinance two-three, two thousand sixteen, which was the last increase, um, that was the increase to eight, like from eight fifty to nine fifty. That isn't it yet. That is on the solid waste collection, removing some of the two and four ten fifty city residents, uh, seeing that Dry Ridge. That constitutes a first reading, the ordinance is clear, and then two thousand seventeen. In article three is where we plug in the numbers, I would go ahead and add that ten seventy-five over there, and add that forty to the max. All right. Item number one. Chris, I am so glad you're here, you got here just in time to talk about your sidewalk, right? Um, the, uh, there are two documents here, the first one is, this is an MOA for the whole project. This is basically the agreement between the state, uh, the federal government, the state, the city of Dry Ridge, uh, for the project. Uh, because it is federal highway administration grant money, uh, for this project, there are several more hurdles to jump through. Uh, one of which being, um, the authorization, this is an authorization, I think this is thirty-something pages. Uh, you're welcome to look through this, it's a lot of, uh, a lot of the information about the project. Um, the project award was two hundred and fifty-six thousand, um, for the sidewalk. Where it is existing on Warsaw Road to Grand County High School, to finish that section of sidewalk. One of the first things we have to do in order to meet the criteria of this first MOA is we have to have an ordinance, or a resolution rather, um, saying that yes, we want to accept the federal government grant. Like I said, there's a lot of hurdles we have to jump through, uh, this is one of the things that we have to do. All this ordinance are, I'm saying ordinance, all this resolution is, is, uh, it's just an acceptance of the federal highway funds and, you know, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, um, and that the authorization will be done in phases. But what this does is it allows me to go ahead and sign that contract document, which is the MOA, so that we can move on to the next part, which is the design phase. And we need to move on to the design phase, so we can start seeing some progress here. Before we can move on to anything, the acquisitions, the property right, everything, uh, usements and all that, um, how all that's coming out, we have to get through this first part, so. Basically, what this resolution is, is just giving me the authorization to sign the agreement to accept the mo. I hope I explained that way, all right?
It's just the first step of, um, many steps.
It's the first of many steps, but the, the project is awarded in phases.
Yes, and also, um, after this, after the process that this will start, the, um, they'll come down and have a meeting. Um, most likely, Kim said that she'll probably, she'll come down here and talk with you, um, and the that must have been, who else was bringing? But, um, if everything goes smoothly, about, you know, it just, she says there's, uh, the whole thing of the grant process, this is the most tedious thing to go through, because there's so many steps to actually getting through to start the project. But if everything runs smoothly, it will start hopefully in this current time.
Construction.
Construction.
Yeah, the design should be, that would be, I think, that stuff we've been living.
No, right ground is playing. But that's as well as saying this runs, you know, it shouldn't.
All right, send you the motion to accept this resolution, two thousand seventeen, Ash, Ken. All right, motion by Sarah, is there a second? Second by Chris, all in. Back several months ago, um, we talked about reverting some of the land that was in, uh, that was designated from the one-eleven project, um, back several years ago. It was re-zoned, uh, the back part of Brentwood was re-zoned, residential three, a highway work, for that project. The, uh, that project actually fell through over the years.
That was that tip out there, wasn't it?
Yes, it was, yeah.
They'll joke, start with, I knew it was.
Yeah. Well, they re-zoned all of that land back behind Brentwood to a highway commercial, which there's no way to get to it other than going through a commercial, or through a residential neighborhood. So, it really doesn't make any sense to continue to have that as highway commercial, because it's restricting any new development back there. So, uh, we talked about this, uh, reverting those changes back to R three. We did take this in front of the planning and zoning, uh, we have, there is copy of the amendments that you sent over with them accepting the changes, accepting the application and supporting that. What that does now, it leads us to ordinance eight thirty-four, two thousand seventeen. This is the ordinance that would actually, uh, let us do the map amendment. The ordinance of the city of Dry Ridge amending the official zoning map of the city, uh, so changing the zoning classification of boundary land containing approximately twenty-four point one eight one nine acres within the corporate city limits of Dry Ridge, Kentucky, there are here to for zoning highway commercial under zoning ordinance official, three eighty, nineteen eighty-two, to the city of Dry Ridge highway commercial under zoning official six ninety-two, two thousand six. This is the ordinance that would then change that to residential. Is there any question over there?
I'm gonna ask you a question.
Yeah.
I think I know it already, okay. So, I know that of any new development, white Brentwood, there was a big movement in it. But it was changed to residential, and, I mean, I'm assuming that they're gonna talk to it, it's standing. But, I mean, even if it, as it is right now, like, just having a one inch, it's crazy, like, you know what I mean, like, right now. Is, I mean, is it just gonna be like that?
I know what you're asking, but I don't know the answer to that, I don't know, maybe you're.
Is the property from all the way up to cul-de-sac on, on the street?
According to, on that ma, on the map, on the old test of what.
I think it is.
I think it went all the way toward cul-de-sac, didn't it? Like, I think, like, that land, it's got it right up.
It made that route from Gaines Heights all the way around, just what Kim was talking about.
So, at one point, if it still is R three, I guess they could put, they could put a road connecting that.
From Ferguson?
Yeah.
Well, I think the whole reason that kinda fell through is because of building over the, with building the bridge over that, that creek, the bottom.
Put the bridge in.
I think that was...
Take them borders for the bridge.
For the bridge. I think that's what kinda made that whole thing cost to pay there.
I, I don't know, I was just curious because, I mean, in theory, it would be, you know, perfect if you just like open the road, but then you also have to think, because you've got hotel traffic and you've got restaurant traffic, so you don't want that kinda running into your, you know, subdivision neighborhood, little bit of pain in the street type area either.
I think I'll do what you recommend you do, Mary.
Well, the only thing I'm recommending is that we just change it back to the way it was.
That's what I'm saying.
We'll take over that. The fact that you said that constituted first agreement, that was the eight thirty-two forty-five. Alright, next bit, it starts along the same, uh, same parameter, and this is nothing that we've done officially yet, other than this will be what, what is considered phase two, so let me just break play and run up the speed before Buck we came on council. One of the things that we noticed a couple of years ago was that we had a lot of non-conforming zones, a lot of businesses operating in non-conforming zones. The biggest of which was Walmart, uh, the strip malls through there, uh, all the gas stations and the restaurants and hotels, they were actually in a neighborhood commercial zone, just didn't allow for those types of businesses. They only allowed for those in highway commercial. In fact, when some of those were built, the city didn't have highway commercial zones, it wasn't added until later. The first step that we took two years ago was to change, was through a text amendment, to change all of the neighborhood commercial language and add all of those things that are supposed to be in highway commercial into the neighborhood commercial language, so that it at least made them conforming to that. With, yeah, with the intentions of then, the second phase was going through, and then changing all of those parcels to what they really should be, which is highway commercial. And the third part would be then tech, changing that text, getting rid of those things back out of neighborhood commercial. It was kinda a long about way to fix a thirty-year problem. So, now we're starting to have some interest in some properties that we're running back into the non-conforming issues, so it's kind of the time to move into the second phase. The map that you've got, I'm gonna put it on the board here. This map you got, the reason why I printed it is because the colors are so close, it's really hard to differentiate between them, but some of these, some of these zones, um, like, right here on Ferguson Boulevard, right here, this is where Walmart is, right here. It's non-conforming as neighborhood commercial. The only reason it's conforming right now is because we made that text amendment a couple of years ago, just kinda as a second amendment. The only way to really fix this is to do one big zone change and fix all of these parts instead of doing it piece by piece by piece, just kinda doing it one big massive fix, okay? The reason why I wanted to kinda show you this and to talk about it a little bit was to get your opinion, um, to get your blessing, so to speak. Before we started perfecting this application, uh, there's gonna be a lot of work to go into it because there are a lot of different parcels. So, we didn't wanna put any work into this, but the amount of work it's gonna take, if this wasn't something that the council wasn't supportive of, trying to correct this problem and get it fixed. Most of the new construction that's happened, uh, when Marshall built Toyota dealership, he went ahead and re-zoned that to highway commercial. When Buck built piles, he's re-zoned that to highway commercial. So as they've been doing it, uh, when McDonald's, uh, went through their new construction, they went ahead and re-zoned that to highway commercial. All of these places are doing this and just, um, doing it and did some pieces in different places, which now is making another issue, where now you've got, uh, convenience or, uh, what's that called, like?
Chief.
Configious issues. So now things are spot zoned in different locations, so now is really the time that we just need to do this in one big group thing, so the body works, they, they treat their... That is zoned as neighborhood commercial and the city did a text amendment, before I came on, I don't remember when that was done exactly, but they did a text amendment to allow fitness centers in highway commercial, even though the location where body works is located was in a neighborhood commercial zone. So it wasn't put into the right zone anyway. It will only work in highway commercial zone, um, so that too would be one of the ones that would have to be changed. So, um, that would be all the property out around, uh, around Call, around Bash and Ridge. We'd really have to take a look at some of these other properties.
I guess all the property on the, or...
Well, I don't know, I haven't talked to all of them, I haven't talked to, but just my hands or...
I mean, I think they would be wanting...
I would think that if there weren't to do any kind of, like McDonald's, when they did a total tear down and a rebuild, they really had to do that in order to be conforming with the zoning regulation. So, um, really the biggest thing, um, that we're doing is just trying to do it in one big massive change at once, to try and fix a lot of the problems that they created.
Now, the businesses, do they have to pay for that change?
If we do it, then they do not. If they do it themselves, they have to pay for us. Um, and that's one of the things, I'm, I'm thinking that, that we should do this because this is something that has just happened over such a long period of time, I think it's only right that we try to fix this problem before it even gets worse.
So what do we in neighborhood commercial?
Well, I think we need to do it, we need to do it, because business people, okay, that's what counts.
Alright, we, we really haven't talked to any of the property owners yet, um, but if it's something that, that you, that you all are supportive of, then we can start that legwork. I just didn't wanna get involved in a big project and then, and then something happening you don't wanna...
I agree with you, you want to kinda do that massive overhaul where you're doing it all at once, harder than doing like, over here, a little bit here, a little bit here, and that just makes it confusing and, yeah, I just, I mean, I feel like if there are changes in any neighborhoods that are, they'll have to do everything that might be, just do it all.
Jim, this is the, these are the permitted things that are in neighborhood commercial right now.
On the other end, she get the deal on mayor, we pull back to it, then we go from there.
It'll, it'll take a couple of months to put this together, yeah.
That's not really highway, that's really not neighborhood commercial, that's more like, you've got two highway commercials on.
Yeah. Some of the, a lot of these things that are, are in this now are because we had to try and merge as much out of highway commercial as to make some of these conforming. Like Wayne's side, we had to bring heavy equipment, this automobile heavy equipment service into neighborhood commercial just to make them conforming.
So when you make the new neighborhood commercial, you need that stuff?
Then you pull those back out. Yeah.
I'll say, 'cause some of them, like this one here, it has hotels and stuff in it for neighborhood, which like Hampton did now, so if you go down there for feet restrictions, it only really came to more than thirty-five feet tall.
Because it's, it's maybe designed for something to be in a subdivision or, in more of a residential neighborhood. There's a lot of non-conforming issues that are still out there right now. It's making it harder for developers that are looking at the property, as soon as they come in and see that that property is listed as neighborhood commercial, that's one of the first things they gotta do, which is have two months of zone change. So if that, if that's something that we don't, as far as some development, then plus we fix problems. Alright, well, then I'll take that as, take a look at that and see what we wanna do or what, what were your thoughts there? I know there's a lot of information to throw at you, but...
Well, I mean, what, what do you, what?
I just don't wanna keep kicking the can down the road.
No, I mean, I know, there, what I'm saying is, what needs to be, like, how do we, like, you know, would someone make a motion to, what?
Well, what would, what we would do now, we would start identifying which properties fit better into the, into the highway commercial zone, kicking all of those properties out, making sure that we're not gonna run into, into this issues, uh, non-conformant issues or whatever it's called.
So who does that? Is that...
We'll do that, yeah. That'll be, um, Brent, Jamie, uh, we kinda, myself, and kinda look at some of those things.
So do we need like a motion here, or do we just...
No, we really don't need a motion, I just wanted to put that in front of you before we even go to the time and effort of putting the application together, so that'll be pretty intensive in order to put that application together. Alright. Well, there's probably some other things that we could look at on there, but... Alright, with that, we'll move into item number four, which is connected section, K R sixty-one eighteen, eight-ten, section one subsection C, pending litigation. Motion again with your section. Second by...
That box, that box, always put no one, valves and stuff in it.
Every damn one, I'm never too sure.
That's right. Hill comes back in the big box.
Is that what they want? Do you catch it?
I didn't know if it was ever changed.
Well, I just know, I was looking at the P B, it's like it's done little parcel. People need to make sure it's done, that joke.
I said, I don't know where the ball put in the box. At, at the zone.
So I guess they can't say, you buy it at this price, but I pay you the same amount for a substantial.
They lived in, they lived in a couple of, couple of three different places, I think. Two of them was on top.
And earn the dirt?
They, they still own. They won. You asked a question, I don't, I don't know what I can do, because there's no business conducted there. There's no utilities there other than, uh, leather. I don't know. I don't know how the one at Williams Towns. Well, City of Williams Towns, right there on the corner of Bond Road, I don't know how they... But this basis was same thing.
Why are these houses central business owners?
Well, there's a lot of houses down through here, because...
Well, I know, but it's just, it's all its own short races, there's two houses, central business, a personal center, but it's neighborhood commercial act. So it just doesn't go in order anymore.
Oh, yeah.
That's the horn.
So, have you gotten that big contract thing?
Yeah, I did it, I did it two times.
What, the leave, when we text, we text that before you write the contract on, if you leave, and then I have to hand it over? Yeah. The city's contract, it's like town packs and like... Yeah, that's why, that's why it's late, yeah.
Got them in now?
Is that two or one? No, seven or one. Seven or one more.
I can take a shower with him too.
No, I can take a shower with him.
Now, you got thirty-nine thousand, thirty-nine one, we got sixty.
Twenty percent.
And I got eleven million.
September a little early.
I'll take yours. I'll take your figure.
I'm trying to get the, I'm on my vacation.
No, no.
Just if I lose wires, it won't be taking you.
He says they're crazy. He just says he's coming by.
He did. Two hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Everything goes my way.
I love it.
She's got seven day weekends.
Works hard as we do around this place.
I'm gonna retire, I won't be a cop.
He has to wear them goggles when he's in the...
I ain't chasing nobody.
With the car, with the car, nah.
Thank it, but he's known.
Postpartum, boy.
Was that, huh? I get one of them, please, you was after. I take the white one. I've been getting a while over there.
Oh, you take the white one, that's what they watch all the time.
Huh?
That's what they watch all the time.
They started, they're all green like it.
He's Rick, he knows nobody. Oh my God, but I'll still, I'll take his bike and all the stuff, he does here at the park.
I don't see any sign up there, but they did say they was coming.
Who's that?
Who's that?
Might be the mess.
Who's coming?
Stake and Shake.
Oh, yeah.
They are?
Yeah.
They just don't have their plans up there yet.
Oh, we don't need them, we can draw that up there. So we get Rick a shark and then make her on out. We can draw that up.
That look like them pizza huts.
Is that coming too, White Castle coming?
Do you wear a cover?
Yeah, hell yeah.
I want a White Castle, but I, and I want a precious, but...
The White's on its way, just hold on, just hold on.
You're star casted.
What? You get to go start everything shows up, must be, we'll have that whole wall full of girls.
Rick, do you wear contacts?
Yeah.
I, I got some.
You just got them tonight.
Really?
That's why we were late. But I'm glad I got here late.
Can't, you put that big boy on them. I'll have to do the come, do the engines, because they, they go with this as well.
Rodney still passes, we have a ton of more chicken.
You can put a couple up there.
Hundred, couple hundred.
No, no, only seventy-five, that's all there is. John Jones was here, we told everybody if they didn't pass it, they had to go through the video class, and John was popping the video class, so everybody made the point, and someone went through it like five hours later, they didn't get a cone, and they were scared to death, they had to set the video class. I don't know about that though. We have to do it every two years, and we do it every year, but it's supposed to be whatever truck is driving.
You got your tissue?
I take, I get to take it in the ladder, Chris.
You can? It's a sweet ride. Well, that's the best way to do it, is when you're coming from a policeman, and there's less going across as a fireman. That works. I was talking to somebody today, I was like, I'm gonna drive the old one.
I'd like to have another, thank you.
It's a corner still, ain't it? We're gonna bring it on screen, we're gonna bring it on camera, and you back there until it falls off, you look at it. We have a backup camera. Oh wait, Robbie's gonna work anywhere. I can see on my card, it's green, yellow red, and you back there, and you get you back there, so I'm like, nothing, don't, don't do this.
Think I'm laying eight beers in this truck, even if it's things on the side, you gotta shut it off.
It is, and still, it's about twenty-two hours, that's...
I don't take pictures of that one. I guess we'll teach you this. It sits on TV.
Hi there again. I know, okay.
I don't worry about that now.
It's the car hall, I know.
I see my favorite one.
Those, the keys are spent.
I know. Yeah.
I'm thinking of going to go airline, walking him to long, he's sitting, and then on duty twenty-two hours.
They work, they stop, they work.
I know, but I mean, I wouldn't think that you could, oh, you would not have that work.
Let's sit up there, we'll have a hook key there.
Well, he was in, he was in, uh, what was it, a mall parking lot or something, uh...
With a buddy of mine, got in a car, got about to move it away.
Refueling, I don't know.
Put my keys back in.
So he was going to get a grab, and then... They're working by the way, fuel.
All the points, they don't get washed, you had to wash them, I mean.
Kel, what's the deal?
On what?
On what, on what are you guys doing here? Sleeping or anything, or is this a mo, gonna be milk telling or what?
We got it, ain't doing nothing.
And you're carrying on it?
We have what, I meant the virtue by one of my superiors, M N C.
M N C.
A municipal monkey circle.
You got an anchor chain? Or you're someone else.
Oh, married for category four now.
Hey, they what? Huh? To what? This one? They have a phone, they have a phone sensor, they're there. I don't see that rich one.
Seems they're losing some kind of weight on it, don't work.
Do you want a park?
Yeah.
You little kid, don't be funny.
Tim Price.
Did what happened? Tim Price.
She died?
Yeah, I'm reading it, this where they are.
Oh, I thought he was like, good crank.
Oh, he did? Well, she was a nice family, I only met today.
When that came?
How old was she?
Not much to eat, yeah, fifty something. I'm surprised she didn't get that before then.
Take one look at that, that's what drugs does to you right there.
Can you leave too? Problem. When she died, it's today?
Close to an hour ago. I'm trying to get the picture ready, come up, and I don't have a hard time, it can't come up. Some reason it won't come up, I don't know.
I put your chair back.
Trying to push it back? And again, I ain't throwing it up.
There's a picture of her.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Huh?
Tim Price.
Tim?
Price.
Tim Parsons Price, who is that?
Viking's a lady. Viking's a girl.
Harold Parsons? Oh, Harold Parsons' daughter. That kind of stuff, you know, really? Yeah. Pretty young, one, two, six, or accident or what?
Ah, shit, didn't smoke that.
Drugs and stuff, whatever. Some kind of... They stitch up together, I believe.
That's training, how old was it?
Fifty-four.
Huh?
Fifty-four. Don't tell me, you grabbed one of their, schoolboy's, right?
I'll take it.
I didn't know, I didn't know about the century.
What'd he look for?
I haven't seen it.
Nineteen thousand or nineteen?
He must be on some good stuff. You love that, I'm pretty sure it's rough.
I need it.
I'll just tell them about that. Looks like a stud. Just looks like, other than, it just ran in the window, yeah. That fish, that one, that one. Then what? What? In his tail?
Well, I don't know, heat fish is everywhere.
How am I where I know anywhere else? On that deck? Seagull, yeah. Any one? They're catching boos, we think, huh?
Wait, what's your?
Jim, Jim Sheed.
Wait, really? Oh, I thought you were two named Greg.
No, these two are brothers.
Wait, really?
Yeah, look at them.
That's good thing you're a young kid.
Yeah, you do.
You don't look nothing like them.
Good thing you're a young kid.
Yeah, we just shaved this morning, too.
I'm gonna have trouble in the morning.
They need a wake-up call in here, or what? They were, they were pizza or... Is that what Domino's was coming up there for? Oh, I forgot, that's, was not Domino's.
My hot dog. Am I doing good, or am I doing terrible?
Did you see the vehicles, like, you're in? They have all the weapons they have, but none of them work. Hey, when you had basketball practice? When you had basketball practice? Who's your coach this year?
A, a new coach.
What's his name?
I don't know.
You don't know?
His son's in fifth grade, and his daughter's in my...
That doesn't tell me anything.
Was his last name Gutman? Coach Gutman?
I think so. He's a new coach.
Does his son name Cooper?
He has blonde curly hair.
No, no, no.
He's in the same grade as your brother.
I know.
Guess I did. I know a lot about him.
It's like some of them big corporations, just down that building, and you start building around here, with a, with a...
He's got like a dark beard.
Recognize that the zone wasn't exactly kosher, you know?
I think you don't have to tell them that, you're a devil.
It's all your cousin, there you go. It's your kinfolk.
My kinfolk. Should've sent Ricky up there before you left.
Oh, that's a struggle.
When they come back, they're saying, we didn't do nothing. Gotta keep him on back, I can't get that.
And Johnny will jump on that. Razor is this.
And there's something else that reads in the six inch rose. I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Pretty good?
Bobby Tony likes this.
How long's he had it?
Three years, I think. Yeah, Hoppy's got one. Hoppy's got one, he picked it up here. I'd say it all depends on how you can set them. For the wind. I've thought about putting one out there at Corinne's, there behind that big barn, right? But I would have to turn it crossways. The way that wind comes up at Rids, I've heard, my trails up in the UK, every one of them, they set, they had the ends to the prevailing wind, either got tore up or blowed down.
That's what I was wondering.
And he said, like, they box, they box them in, so, he said, they tried storing hay in them, stacking hay up to the top, and he said... It doesn't take them away, but it's who they're, they're like... He said, you get, with the, the rain and wind, both, over the side of it.
Simon says?
And they was back for cooking. Remember, for that big two-story white house where he used to milk up there, they, they got all the, all the cooking in there. They put one out there. But now, he angled that now, just right, and, uh... Everybody that's got him that I know of, likes him.
I'm gonna do it.
Wait, you don't play Simon Says?
I think, I think, I said, you know, I don't know if he's got him, but I know anything about him. So I didn't, we talked to him about our deal, but, but he's in a building, he's big enough for what I need, but one of them would be bigger, I probably got the same size, but, I didn't know if there on McDonald's, whether it... I took a chance on one or not, you know?
That's what, that's really nice, put one out here, I'd like to have one, just still hay, but...
Oh, I love that. I love it.
Hey, tell me that you lose a third of the row of hay over one. One out. If they're losing a third of the roll of hay, they ain't rolling with a very good bucket. But I've got hay out there that's been out there for two years. It ain't been the third. It's just a little bit. But the hay is still good, you can pull that much of the cap off of it, this thing. It's like it wasn't. But now, mine sits, it's slumped on bo- both sides. Where I've got my hay, there ain't no water sits underneath it. And I'd say that's why they lose a lot of it, if it's on flat ground. And they're on dirt. That's how they lose a lot.
So I started putting all mine inside, had a spot there, just kind of rubbing. And once at the top, we're always putting, before I got down, seeing like the water was running, and they get to some point, they start going between them. Like the last three or four, they'll always be just back, you know what I mean? Like the first eight or ten is always real good, as long as I can just. Move them down, getting down so far, and finally about. When I put them there, I would push them as far as I could, you know, just push them, you know. I don't wanna do it, it costs my money, I don't wanna spend it.
Well, I'm gonna build me another barn there, behind, behind that big barn.
I don't know where she, where she could put it.
Probably build that next year.
Somebody said where they want it, oh, in that, in that old bar, in that old garage shop.
That's a big barn.
You don't put Simon says?
I mean, we're.
And. If I got everything in the barn, I ain't gonna load more than that.
Right now.
You see the big quiet though?
Quiet now? Three, two, one.
I gotta pull all that out. Cause that's my feed. Soon as weather. Always gotta be pulled outside. And all the picks. It's gotta be at least twelve foot, that's the chopper and the pickers and the wagons, I have twelve foot doors, but.
Sure, I gotta clean out a spot. In the end of that barn, put the combine in. I don't know what, I don't know what to do with a combine, but. Have it, got it like you need it, well.
Must've got a good price, huh?
Hate it. Red and white, I mean, it's gotta go in the barn. He bought that.
About time you get a Cinderella to turn in.
Trying to get. The cave, and let it put corn back that ridge, and then it would happen. Took me four years to get just like his off course, and he plowed it, no way.
Mine's like turned off there this year, and that's across from mine. I motored this year, usually, I take turns plowing and motoring, you know, in a few years. This year, when I shook it up, I spread manure, and I knew it was all gonna, so it ran stuff. I'm trying to ground just round a plow, it ain't gonna stay dry enough to get work and get rain, but it's like, well. I motored, it done real good, chopped it.
I'm gonna try to start cutting hay up, and then I got a bunch of hay, I bet we can get hauled out like that. Pulling it up like fairgrounds, I'm kidding, then out there hauling manure.
Have a place to fairgrounds, need some green gas? Sticking manure out there?
It's worth too much.
You want everybody to know.
Yeah, that's a motive, man, thirty, I didn't know. They ain't even get some more, you gotta know.
Last year I had twenty-five steers.
They already dig it once.
And a lot of waste hay, it's all on concrete, and probably gonna be something they need every bit of this, they had to eat that solid, just stand there. Every week it's about. That deep, they just stand there, eating the whole time, so. And I had twenty-five steers, and I hope twenty-five boats of manure out there. Pretty much twenty-five loads of manure. Not a lot, so that's. Pretty good stuff, I mean.
Well, manure, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Going up the hill, you know, it was still. Well enough for. Up the trail, going up the hill, you know, like I got sloppy on the back of it.
I like thunder, fifty, sixty, eighty. I'd like to let it sound. You can raise it to more, haul it in. And I just put that concrete, I'll take it.
That's what I do. I went over there to Reese, bought, I had six by, six blocks. Those are, one of the banks, we just got a hole out there, a block on both sides, and other blocks got out here. And then, called concrete, took some air, and just pour concrete bottom in it. When he had them out, it's like, why don't you just put them in? At work. And I wanna make it, you know, if I ever decide to quit using the bunker, I put a. That's why I said that one of the people, I thought that didn't work. Yeah, that worked real good. What to say, huh? First, first year I had that up there, I found one of the dump trucks. Behind the pickup truck. I had a wagon. What am I gonna do? He just dropped beside me. He put a four-eight sheet of plywood up on the side of it. Turned that chute around there, he just drove beside me. I just drove, shot it there the whole time, you know? Get a switch, and dump it out the bunker. That worked pretty good, it was free, it was fast. Had no time to unload, you know, cause I took it up in there, I had to do it back into the pit, hit the button. Open the doors and settle out, and throw it off. I'll catch, start stacking and shoveling.
I'm not, I'm not trying this. I'm looking for only, with only four foot, loading them dump trucks. I didn't drive, so I'm finding one of those, damn those words, I'm gonna put a tag ax on it. They got their, that's their weapon, you know? That's a, I'd chop it a little, throw it in there.
I had a boat in Somerset, his dad, his dad had a bunch of dump trucks. And then, haul, they put all gravel, blacktop, and they hauled up solids.
But with that, to haul something like that in there, with, with that concrete.
You talk too.
You go over lime sand, and it's just, it's a great trip, isn't it? The rug, a bummer when that would be that wide. How wide is yours?
Eighteen feet.
Eighteen feet?
I wish it was a little bit wider. Put it on the bucket, you know, I mean, just. Twenty-four would've been perfect, yeah. I couldn't live with twenty, but eighteen, I mean. That's why we shoot. I measured it, I measured it, we dug it out. Pulled the loader out of there, and realized it's maybe about two foot wide.
Yeah.
That must be four, fifty, instantly, you know what I mean? It works real good, though. Main thing is. First year I had it, I didn't have one very long.
This is about the longest thing ever.
We've had forty foot long, and it's stacked up.
I'm assuming I lost in that.
Face that, you start getting, start drying out, you know what I mean? So next year we add another, uh, twenty foot to it.
You're just third grade.
You're five, between six and eight foot tall, you wanna keep that face down. Or, you know, pretty much takes me, what I feed, a scoop across to the week, you know what I mean? That way, every way I go back.
And Mike is moving.
Every week, keeps that face nice and clean and fresh. Be special in the time, but, cause it feels hot, you know what I mean?
Well, you came home with leave.
No, I. I was gonna chop, I was gonna chop over late weekend, I looked at it, I checked it out, it's just a little bit early. I'm gonna get it done this weekend. We had all that rain, so, there's a lot of kinds of help, cut the rain in the morning. So we chopped it the next weekend. Two acres of the trees, and stuff was tired, it's now on the chopper, it was down. I go through there, a lot of people in there, and all of a sudden it's just getting, just tangling. Five, get up, and fingered out, it'll take off in the air, you know what I mean? Five, cause once you drop it off, I'm always scared I can go. Always I can go, but it's just, and once I was just catching the pile of it, and just sucks it up there, and there we are. You have to pull it back out, being, like, on deer's hoof. What was up on me? It was standing up here. Got that two-year chopper. It ran right through it. I'd have to push it crunchy once in a while, just chuck it down, it was just going there so fast, yeah. I bought a couple wagons.
I know a game you like ice fight.
I don't know, I'll tell you. I seen on Craigslist, and I have, I had one wagon, and a lot of it was getting worked on. I don't know if he's gonna get it fixed or not. I seen him on Craigslist, I only bought a couple. Sixteen-foot Kobe, size wagon.
I think Solder game.
I think he's tired, I wonder if he's tired, driving all day, basically. Seems like a pretty good wagon, maybe it works good, you know what I mean?
Greg, you like to play ice fight?
When chain popped off on the very last third, I had a wheelbarrow load up there, chain popped off. Shaft on, something a little thing, had moved over, just knocked, but the shaft sliced it. Put a chain back on, hit it with a hammer, turned it on.
You do, you'll play ice fight? Not really. I like to play getting loose base.
Big, he's a big animal.
They don't have the energy, dude.
Big hammer, short hammer.
What is he getting on break today?
Long handle.
Now, you can do a whole lot of damage with a short hammer, that's right. Sometimes you can't get them long handles, who you make. Yeah.
You got many, five-pound slow jam, that's not long, I drive middle finger, temporary pinch person, I travel all day. Saturday, and, yeah, stick it in the ground, smack it to a three pound, go to the next one, you know what I mean? Okay, a big old driver, or. I guess, for cheater bar, and then bobbing around, bobbing, scared cheater bar, turn tight, so. He said, I'm rocking twenty minutes, standing on the local, get it open.
This one, they're doing it there?
I don't know, I'm going to some time.
Can you say hello, and go and take him at Reed? You think? Did so. Do you have a player? It's German. They're gonna take care of it regularly. German McCumber.
Do you call you there? Do you call you? Why are you supposed to call me? Gotta take the water tire. The water tire, the flex nut thing, to agree for the water tires? I called him.
They got these, they, they finally come. Come out with their meters. Using that flex nut.
Yes, you do. On Facebook it says, if you got a gem on your hand, you're special.
That's what. So I called Friday, and somebody came back. It wasn't Jeremy, somebody else, so, they said, Lee, I gotta talk to Jeremy, I'm gonna run Monday, someone gets a call, somebody was on. I can't, I can't.
Friday, and I told him, I said, if this handheld gonna cost a whole lot to fix it, there ain't no sense of putting it there.
Well, there ain't no line coming down.
The age of them.
It's just broken.
It wasn't Jeremy, it was somebody else. He's a salesman. And he's like, I was just talking to Jeremy about this.
You are broken.
Once he started saying what it was, I was like, I know you're talking to Jeremy about it before. But you want to check prices on it. Cause that'll give us an hour to reading. See where, hopefully, what's some stuff going on.
Well, you can, you can do some much stuff with it, when it reads down here, it reads that right. And somebody's got a leak. You can light it the next day, yeah.
Or it'll probably, even probably say it's an alarm. Says, you know, can you use a thousand hours, a thousand hours an hour, there's an issue.
Yeah.
And what do you think, huh? What's the most, for residential, I mean, what's that inch or quarter?
Like, an hour, yeah.
I don't know, three quarters.
Three quarters, okay. What do you think it'd be an excess, running through that? Would it be that way? Someone might just, you can block that up in three hours, hundred gallons, blah, blah.
Uh, he could run. Two thousand gallons, man.
Okay, so if you say twenty-five hundred gallons, set a flag.
Yeah. Set a flag before that. Cause it'll take, it'll take, uh, every daily use.
I'm glad.
And I think double.
Compared to what you'd regular use, it's in that timeframe, we're trying, well, yeah. That'd be definitely a lot better. You know, we'd be, you'd go for a pool or something, or? Of course you have. But you said that the meters ain't turning on.
But now, you said, they just come out with them, and they have not got them. Really for sale yet.
In the van?
But he said in a year or two.
Well, if we do that, though, at the same time, when we start replacing them, it's not, we have to do, like, we did the radio, you said. It's when we start replacing them.
It's not that old.
I want one of them drift carts.
If you replace the ones inside these buildings. With them, and then that fifteen and twenty that. The bridge will turn on half every month.
I told him many times to give me a drug, but when it came to Christmas. She gave the drug to my cousin.
Was he bad?
No.
Really?
Really.
Hey, that, we all did damage, it'd take sixteen hours.
When I went to my. Yes, I got it.
So it'd take twenty-two hours. It'd take. You only, like, six hours. She can just get the bills out.
You don't know where it's gonna go.
But I have, I have good knowledge on the other one.
Oh, you got good knowledge on it, you got it figured out.
But not enough. We had, we got it stuck in the tree, he had to get the chainsaw, cut down the branches.
That is, that's very good knowledge, Karen. Fifty-two thousand dollars.
He had to get his chainsaw, I think we were going to church that day.
Six thousand.
And all the wood stuff was on our shirts.
And it was locked in for twenty years.
But we had to get it out.
There's money, there's nothing but.
Don't you think that's something that, I think, the water, we're back off of, two, three times. I said the water car. They come back, thank you.
They help them back in here, but.
Thank you, it's fun, we gotta do this stuff. That's good, sitting there, oh, no, no, no.
I wanted to have ten shakes, but they're, they're. You have a man that's got, he's a.
There's just nothing to do. You'll play against me, I'll get a singer.
Hey, someone earned that, and we'll come find you.
You can play it my way, well.
I can't.
Okay. Get, get behind you and count to ten, please, or I.
Get behind me, and then.
Well, like, turn around me.
Oh. Hold on, hold, here's this lady, she was, what's my same pool, she was running, she was turning around, she was shaking her back end. She's all, and she puts it in, and she's behind her, moving out of her. And she's, that's a trick, you know, that's supposed to be, that's supposed to be. She's like, I'm like, I'm like, financial, I can't take that offense. She, we all got it.
Play against me, we're killing you.
We don't adjust their propaganda.
I was like, yeah, I was like, that's, I can't.
I'm not, maybe no problem.
I don't know, she wants to, so I was like, I don't do the whole back. Does that sound like a civil issue, but the property?
You made a motion, made a second motion, come out of your second decision, so now we're back in the regular, regular session, if there's any other business?
All right, I'm here, done.
All in paper? All right, motion carried.
Apparently it's done.
No business, thanks.